The meeting is called to order at 7:01 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. May I have a motion in a second that the agenda of March 12th, 2019 be approved as submitted?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda to include the approval of minutes of February 26th, 2019 as submitted, acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education, acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education, acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes, request to approve the recommended bidder as listed, and approval of requests to dispose of unserviceable textbooks.
Can I move?
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. No treacherous report? Special reports?
Yes, we have one special report this evening. Very exciting. We have our Science Olympiad, some of our Science Olympiad Bay Trail team here, and I'll invite Mr. Prey, a science teacher at Bay Trail but also one of the coaches, advisors of Science Olympiad, and I believe several students are gonna speak, and I'll let them introduce themselves and tell us what's going on with Science Olympiad.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'll give you a little history. My name is Michael Prey, and in 1996, I scraped together nine students, and we went off to the Science Olympiad competition. There were 21 events. Our rallying cry was, "We're not last!" It was something. It was eye-opening. The next year, we were able to field a team of 15. We finished somewhere in the middle of the pack, and each year following, made a steady climb up until we were regularly finishing in the top five and headed for states each year. So I did that for about 10 years, and then Mr. Deontay Williger took over and just did an outstanding job with the team. We're bringing two teams, three teams from Bay Trail to the competition. And really, for over 15 years, we've been finishing in the top three at regionals and going to states. And generally in states, we finish somewhere between 10 and 15. We've been in the top 10 in the state, actually, for many years running. So last year, we went to states, and that was under Mrs. Danielle Monis. And this year, I'd like to introduce some of the Science Olympiad team who is here tonight. We finished second in the regions, really first, but we were second in the region officially, and we're going to states this year. So these are some of the students here who were part of that team. And also, we have some of the coaches here, and, oh, there we go, and some of our coaches there in the back. So now, having said all that, this program is really not about the medals we've won or the trophies we've brought back to the district, or even how many times we've gone to states, which have been substantial. There's lots and lots of that. I want you to understand that this program is about what happens afterwards, and that's what a lot of these kids are up here to talk about. The Bay Trail Science Olympiad team has produced so many adults who've gone into the field of science because of their involvement with the team. Two of the most impressive that I'm aware of, Mrs. Shawna Richards, she now works for NASA, and Michael Etker got his doctorate with the U of R and worked with MIT, and he said, and has said over and over again, that the reason he's a doctorate in aeronautical engineering is because he spent four years building planes for Science Olympiad for the right stuff event. This team, as far as I know, is one of the only ones, and maybe the first, to have high school students come back to be mentors and coaches for upcoming Science Olympians. This is one of the byproducts of this team that I am most proud of. This time, I'd like to introduce Ariel Struzik and Chris Pendleberry and Alyssa Yang to speak about their experiences. So if you guys wanna start.
Hello. First, I would like to thank the Board for letting us have the time to speak today. My name is Ariel Struzik, and I'm a senior at the high school, and this, next year, I'm going to Cornell University to major in chemical engineering. I've participated in Science Olympiad for six years now. I'm involved in both divisions. At the middle school, I co-coach an event, and at the high school, I'm a co-captain as well as a competitor. I attribute many positive facets of my life today to Science Olympiad. During the stressful transition into sixth grade, I met all my friends and felt like part of a community. Many of my job references and volunteer opportunities came from Science Olympiad. I have written about it and earned science-based research internships, and as a result, worked with many professors and undergraduate students. This year, at the New York State Regional Science Olympiad Competition, I judged an event. Not only have I worked with parents, community members, teachers, and other students, but I am taking those skills into the future. Thank you for continuing to support our successful Science Olympiad teams, and I hope you continue to do so in the future.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Alyssa Yang, and this is my first year for Science Olympiad. I think it's a very good program, and it's really fun. All the coaches are very good at coaching. And I think it's a really good place to be and a team to be in. It's really fun.
So kind of also what Mr. Prey was talking about...
You can just pull it over.
There you go. Okay. So Mr. Prey was talking about how, like, the middle school's Science Olympiad students carry this experience through them and even after high school, and that's definitely true because we are on the high school team. The high school team would not be what it is if we didn't have the middle school team and those kids coming up with the strong base skills that they learned in middle school and then carrying it through in high school. Like, in middle school, I did this event called Experimental Design, and so, one year in middle school, our coach, we didn't have a coach, so my friend and I volunteered to coach it. It was an experience, and I ended up coaching it for the past, like, what, five years? Five years, and we've gotten, like, first, this year we got second, but we've gotten first every year since then, and I even wrote my college application essay about it, so I will read the first paragraph for you, for your entertainment. Okay. Chaos. All around me was pure chaos, the type of chaos that can only exist in one place, a middle school classroom. There were papers on the ground, balls flying through the air, and shoes strewn about the floor. One kid had flipped a garbage can over and was using it as a drum. An outsider might be slightly concerned, but for me, this was just another Saturday spent coaching Experimental Design. This week's experiment was about entropy, the state of disorder nature prefers to be in. So, like, it's also fun, not only are we, like, serious students, but we also, it's a nice place to have fun with science, and that science doesn't all have to be, like, taking tests and, like, crunching numbers and all that. That it can be fun and be a good experience to build community and friendships.
So that's our time. I'd like to thank the Board and the Bay Trail Administration, the community for their continued support of this particular academic team and the district's academic teams in general. These teams are vital to the success of our students, and I hope that the Penfield Board of Education and all its leaders will do everything in their power to acknowledge and support and keep these academic teams as inspirations to the future scientists of generations now and yet to come. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere yet. Let's check with the Board. Any questions or comments? Mark?
First of all, I just wanna see, how many people had fun on the Science Olympiad? Just one, oh, two. Okay. Well, and it's a phenomenal activity, and I just wanna tell you, you don't appreciate it now, but what you've learned in the Science Olympiad exceeds what many adults have learned and what many adults have long since forgotten. So you are not doing middle school or high school educational-level activities, you're doing adult-level activities, and this will carry you on for the rest of your life. And I think it's a phenomenon that you guys took the time to get involved with this and really grow yourself.
Thank you. Barb? I just wanna say thank you to Mr. Prey for even thinking to get it started, and that's what teachers are all about, so thank you.
I think it was an accident.
One of those happy accidents.
Happy accident.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Putnam?
Sure. I just have the picture up, I put up, 'cause you're gonna leave probably after special report, but during my reports, I'll mention the Science Olympiad team, the middle school team placed in second in regionals, so it's a picture of that day, and you can see, I think, lots of smiles and excitement and medals, and I had an opportunity to be there, and I just wanna thank Mr. Prey as well and Mr. Nagels, the other advisor.
Mr. Nagel, yeah, Mr. Dan Nagel.
And then, you mentioned the coaches, but there's so many parents, too. I know there's at least one in the audience, but the students and parents who give up their time to come in and learn something and teach something, and one of our goals for the Board and for the district and for myself is partnerships, and I think without setting forth as a partnership, this is sort of a natural partnership with our community and our parents and our students, and it really is an amazing event. So thank you for all the work that you do behind the scenes to make it happen.
Yeah, I can't, I can't thank the teachers and the parents and the high school students enough. There's 21 events, and each event has four to five, sometimes eight, kids in it. There's no way to do this team without that support, and so they've been great, honestly. The coaches have been fantastic, and it stinks going off to Cornell, but, you know, they gotta go.
She doesn't actually, she doesn't actually graduate unless Catherine and I sign that diploma, so it's fine.
Oh, huh. Oh.
Just eat it. That's wonderful.
So what I wanted to say before you left tonight is, I wanted to tell the students that Mr. Prey is so proud of all of you. He contacted the Board, he contacted Dr. Putnam and me to let us know about your victory here in the second place, and he just wanted to share it all, not only with the Board but with the community. So I'm really, I'm really happy that you reached out, Mr. Prey, and I'm really proud of all the students, and we were just, we're thrilled to hear all about it and to share in the fun and the glory that you're experiencing, and, you know, your plans for the future. So it's very cool, it's very interesting, it's very fun, but like Margelich was saying, you know, this is something you're gonna carry forever, and I'm just thrilled that you could come tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you mind, can we, do you mind if we do a quick picture with the team? If I gave Nancy, if I gave you my phone, would you be able to take a quick picture with the team?
That'd be great.
And maybe the Board, like we did with Sources of Strength?
Yes.
If they just came up here real quick? Do you mind?
Hope y'all don't mind. Oh, that'd be great.
I think we were back here, and you guys were in front of the table. That works. Does that work? Hey. You're tall. Do you see Nancy? If you see Nancy, she is CEO. She's over here. Can you see us all? Can you see Barb?
I'm kneeling on the chair.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Prey. Thanks, everybody.
It's awesome. It's just so fun. Meeting is over.
Thank you for that.
It's great.
They get so, like, excited. Yeah, it's really awesome.
Maybe, we'll see.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, you're still on special reports, right?
That concludes special reports.
Thank you. Well, I have to know what I'm doing here. I need my cues. All right, so visitor speaking time? No one, no one tonight? Okay, Levia.
Hello, good evening. A lot happening on the student's side these few weeks. To start off, at Indian Landing, they held their 11th Annual Red and White Student and Staff Basketball Game, where the fifth graders were teamed up with staff members, and all proceeds went to the Ronald McDonald House. The Carrying Capacity at Cobbles held a very informative presentation on integrity at their Character Education Assembly. The Brain Show came to Harris Hill, came to their Arts and Education Presentation, where the kids were able to participate in their game show to win prizes. At Scribner, they had a Dog Day Afternoon called Tales for Tales, where students had fun reading books to the dogs. As mentioned before, this Bay Trail Science Olympiad team won second at regionals and earned their spot to state states. And in addition, the Odyssey of the Mine team placed third, fifth, and sixth in their divisions at their competition. Bay Trail Middle School also held amazing performances throughout the weekend of Madagascar Junior, the musical, and throughout this week, they are playing a new game called Guess Who, where students are trying to identify 25 staff members from pictures from their childhoods. At Penfield High School, the Robotics Team came in seconds in the finals and earned the imaginary award at their regional competition in Montreal. Students proudly represented Penfield High School at the New York State DECA Competition. Students attended the Senior High All County Ensembles when were able to perform at the Eastman Kodak Hall. And there was the Model UN Conference at St. John Fisher College with three students winning best and outstanding delegates. And PHS will hold their musical of Fiddler on the Roof next weekend on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And school-wide, last week, Penfield District celebrated Blue Ribbon Week, which promotes anti-bullying with various spirits day, spirit days for each day. One of them was Put Yourself in Their Shoes, where teachers dressed like students and students dressed like teachers. And in addition to that, the Penfield High School Cool to Be Kind Club hung up positive messages on everyone's locker, which really raised everyone's morale for the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Levia. Board members, any questions or comments for Levia? Another great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just a reminder, 'cause you mentioned Fiddler on the Roof.
Yes.
Is that right now, Levia has to go because she's in the pit orchestra, correct?
Yeah.
So, exactly.
Yeah, next weekend.
All right.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Levia. Okay. Superintendent reports.
So this evening, I do have some student and staff honors, where I'll attempt to do a good old job as Levia, but that's not gonna happen. And then, I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci. There's three reports tonight. The 2019 BOSI's Capital Project Update, which we've talked about a bit, and then the 2019-2020 BOSI's Budget Review, and then an overview of the 2019 Capital Project that we've talked about a bit, too, but a little bit more detail. So in terms of staff honors, and honors, we mentioned Science Olympiad, so just wanted to point out that photo again and how wonderful, the kids really had a good time. I should've mentioned, but I will share that I was able to attend that event and hearing from other districts, and there were districts from all over, like, an hour and a half away drove to this regional, and people were amazed at what, how our kids prepared. The fact that we had high school coaches, parent coaches, that students knew what to do, they were bust over, they, it was very well organized in chaos, 'cause it was a bit chaotic to bring that many middle school students to St. John Fisher and toss them on campus, but, but our team really got a lot of rave reviews from the parents from other districts that I spoke with, which was just, it's nice to hear. And again, that's Mr. Prey, Mr. Nagel that really put that all together.
Dad.
What's that?
You're the proud dad of the district.
My son might be in that picture, too. So it was very exciting, but I get to see it at home and watch kids learning science on Saturday and Sunday on their own with not a single complaint to go to the library and learn about circuits or potions and poisons for an hour and a half on the weekend. So they really do have a lot of buy-in, and it's really cool to watch, so.
That says a lot, really.
Yeah, I couldn't get him here tonight, but it was really, it was really great. Odyssey of the Mine, Levia mentioned, but Bay Trail Odyssey of the Mine team did wonderful, third, fifth, and sixth in their divisions at the regional competition. A couple other really cool awards, actually Catherine and I were at Rotary today, and they talked about this, and so congratulations to two of our juniors, Jasmine, Kylie, and Jessica Dawson, who tied for fourth place at the regional Rotary Oratorical Competition. And what's really neat there is, we talked about at Rotary, is that Penfield is really well-established, and they're actually struggling to get people to apply and prepare in other districts. So we'll be, I'll be partnering with Rotary on behalf of our district on how we can get the word out to other districts on what an incredible opportunity this is, 'cause they actually get some pretty significant scholarships if they get first or second place. Our kids did a wonderful job, and a little history with our, this contest is that in 2008, when I came here as an assistant principal, we had very few kids, and now, thanks to Lisa Henry, John Baxter, the English Department, they actually make this sort of part of an assignment for speech class. So kids are, public speaking class, so kids are actually preparing and learning, so we actually have to have sort of like a semifinal at the high school to narrow it down to the six or seven kids that go off to Rotary, who are then, from there, two are selected to move forward. So we're really doing a great job in Penfield, thanks to our incredible teachers with this competition. Another amazing feat is junior Reese Stojavansky, I know I didn't say that right, and I apologize to Reese, for winning first place in the Rochester Regional ESU Shakespeare Competition, and she'll go on to compete in the national competition in New York City.
Nice.
Very cool. And then Robotics Competition, did an incredible job. The PHS Robotics Team came in second place in the finals and earned the Imagery Award at their recent regional competition in Montreal, Canada, and they will compete in the Finger Lakes Regional Competition at RIT this weekend, so if anybody's interested, it's open to the public at RIT, and it's an amazing event. And we have a couple music awards. Seniors Christina Pendleberry and Suzanne John are being named winners of the Howard Hanson Certificate of Merit by the Rochester Piano Teachers Guild, Inc. for excellence in piano performance. So some incredible talent here in our district. Speaking of that, I shared this, I think I shared this with the Board, but congratulations to the following Penfield High School students. I love this Skills USA Competition. It is through BOSI's, and it's the regional competition for our students who are in many different trades through the BOSI's EMCC program. And so Lauren Gooseon is a member of the first-place Quiz Bowl Team. Reese Hafner and Liam Perry both participated in the Carpentry Division. Alexandra Indaniva was related tech math, and Bailey LaToff was for nail care. And so I love this, 'cause we talked about, like, when Mr. Huffman was here with campus and talked about the trades and talked about trying to get more students interested, because this is not just a Penfield issue, but really a national crisis with kids not going into the trades. You know, some of these areas are really amazing. Our EMCC students do an incredible job, and so just kudos for them for going to the regionals and doing a great job. We had a donation, so thank you to Mr. Andrew Jones, who donated a trumpet and trumpet stand to the music department, and this is a very welcome donation, and the instrument will definitely be enjoyed by our students. And that is it for my updates, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci to start us off with the BOSI's Construction Project.
Good evening. I have three updates for you tonight, one on the BOSI's, a follow-up on the BOSI's Reconstruction Project, the BOSI's Capital Project, our BOSI's Budget, and then just a little bit on our, on our capital project itself. The reason that the, tonight is the, sort of, the time in our schedule to look at BOSI's, and it's, so it's by chance that this appears here tonight as well, but in your agenda tonight are a number of items related to this. So in your agenda is a resolution adopting the agreement between BOSI's and all the component districts to authorizing them to go forward with the capital project, so I wanted to just remind everyone here in the public what that's all about. You've had previous presentations on it, but things have moved forward, and I just wanna take a few minutes to talk about that, talk about the BOSI's Budget. And then also on your agenda tonight is the resolution wherein we establish the date of the vote and the, and the language that'll be contained therein. So we'll wanna talk a little bit about our capital project, because that's part of that resolution, as well as the general budget. So I'll begin with the BOSI's Reconstruction Project. As you know, this is not an additions project, it's all reconstruction at BOSI's. The presentations that I'd showed you before had tentative scope, it's now the official scope, BOSI's. At a meeting this month, adopted the resolution, they declared themselves as lead agent, and they're moving forward. So replacement, roof replacements on two buildings, whoops, I'm sorry. Infrastructure at the Foreman Center, sort of routine maintenance of the building, visitor entrance reconfiguration, paving, interior finishes, and so on, the kind of work that needs to be done to maintain a building of that size, and some program, program upgrades, I'm sorry. So changes to classrooms, expansions, just really refreshing those classes, many of which have not been touched in since the 70s and 80s. So that, of course, well overdue as well. The estimated cost of that project is $22 million, and we each share in that cost. Each of the component districts shares in that cost based on our proportion of our water, of the students, measured in a particular way in the, in the, in the BOSI's. So we have about 10% of the component district students, we bear about 10% of the cost, or our share then is about $2.299 million. That's eligible for state aid, so we'll receive about $1.4 million of state aid back. The net cost to the district then is about $396,000. As I mentioned before, because this, sometimes there's a vote on these projects, and a BOSI's wide vote, in this case, there does not need to be. It's because it's a renovations project only, that decision's made by the component district boards. So all boards will be having this same conversation over the course of this month, and it needs to be a unanimous decision. So if every and all, if each and all of the component districts approve this, it can go forward. That does offer some flexibility. If the BOSI's were to have the district, the district-wide vote, they would finance it, it would have to go through the dorm authority. This really authorizes us to make whatever makes sense for us in terms of our own local financing arrangements. In terms of timeline, at the February 28th meeting, the BOSI's Board took care of their end of this, of this project. So they declared themselves lead agent for coordinated review of all the districts, issued a negative declaration, that means they determined that it does not have, will not have a negative impact on the environment. They approved the scope of the project, and they authorized the intermunicipal agreement. You have a copy of the intermunicipal agreement in your packet, and that's, and our signature to that agreement is what we're asking for on the, on the agenda tonight. So presuming that tonight we authorize that, all the other districts will be taking that same action, and then I'll be coming back to you again once with a resolution for approval of a bond resolution. We don't intend to issue bonds, but BOSI's has requested that all of the component districts issue that resolution, so that there's consistency and no doubt about potential for financing district-wide. There's no harm to us, I've reviewed it with our bond counsel, he's fine with us going forward with that. Assuming that we all move, decide to move forward with this, BOSI's will enter a design phase. This'll sound very familiar to you, this is, they, they are subject to the same approval at SED that we are, so they will go through design, they, their target date for SED submission is March of 2020. They hope to award, award contracts in the October to January 20, 20 to 2021 timeframe, begin construction, and hope to be closed out by December of 2022. That's the quick summary. We spent a little bit more time on it in previous meetings, but if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Board members?
Thank you. Next is our budget. So coincidentally, we're talking about BOSI's tonight, and this is the night for, for us to review our share of the, of, or rather, BOSI's portion of our budget, the services that we purchase in support of our program through BOSI's. So we always begin with our goals, and I always point out, I think, as we move through... issue that resolution so that there's consistency and no doubt about potential for financing district-wide. There's no harm to us. I've reviewed it with our bond counsel. He's fine with us going forward with that. Assuming that we all move, decide to move forward with this, BOSI's will enter a design phase. This will sound very familiar to you. This is, they, they are subject to the same approval at SED that we are, so they will go through design. They, their target date for SED submission is March of 2020. They hope to award, award contracts in the October to January 20, 20 to 2021 timeframe, begin construction and hope to be closed out by December of 2022. That's the quick summary. We spent a little bit more time on it in previous meetings, but if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Board members?
Thank you. Next is our budget. So coincidentally, we're talking about BOSI's tonight and this is the night for, for us to review our share of the, of, or rather, BOSI's portion of our budget, the services that we purchase in support of our program through BOSI's. So we always begin with our goals and I always point out, I think, as we move through what I think the connection to the goals for this, that, for the particular portion of the budget is. And certainly fiscal responsibility plays a part. BOSI's, services that are adable through BOSI's, we get aid on. That makes our dollar go further, reduces the burden to our taxpayers. Certainly academic achievement and excellence. You heard tonight about some students who, who are excelling in the trades as a result of their participation in BOSI's. Our special education students have opportunities they wouldn't otherwise have because of BOSI's in terms of related service support to our programs. They assist us greatly. But really, this one, more than anything else probably, is about partnerships. So the idea behind BOSI's at its inception was that we would band together to provide, to provide things cooperatively that we couldn't afford to provide for ourselves. The state incents that. They give us state aid. They, they help make that happen, but really even without the state aid, BOSI's would make sense. The idea that we would all, as a school community, band together and, and to do our work, I think is a fine example of partnerships. And we have a long history of active participation on the BOSI's Board and in, and in BOSI's committees and, and really in the workings of BOSI's itself. It's part of our budget. As you know, we've been at this since October and we're starting to see a lot of green. I color it green as we get it done and we have two slides worth of green and we're on our way to the end. So tonight is the BOSI's Budget Presentation. All that's left is, at the next meeting, a review of benefits. At that point, we'll have a first look, a draft look at a total budget. April 22nd, the deadline for petitions for board candidates and also for any budget petitions. And by the 23rd, we need to adopt the budget in order to make our timelines, our advertising timelines and so forth, and be able to have our public hearing on May 7th and the vote on the 21st. This is where we're at. So as of tonight, we've presented four of the six, I should say, two tonight, we've presented four of the six. Tonight will be the fifth. And as you can see, BOSI's is one of the smaller ones, but still a very significant portion of our budget. It is about 11% of the total pie or about $11 million. So the budget is going, the total BOSI's budget will be just under $11 million, 10.97, an increase of about $354,000 or 3.3%. This is a difficult budget to talk about a little bit because, as you know, we buy a great variety of services from BOSI's. You know, most famously or most well-known or, or sort of the first services that spring to mind, I mentioned special education, certainly also occupational education services, transportation, I think people are well aware of. But there's a broad variety of other kinds of things we buy from BOSI's. So the BOSI's supports regular education programs for us, career and technical education, the trades kinds of educations, our cooperative summer school, drivers' education. They help us coordinate textbooks for non-public schools. So those sort of regular instruction, the regular instruction program in Penfield participates and benefits from BOSI's. A broad variety of computer and technical services, so backroom kinds of computer services that we may not see every day, but that certainly we, help us provide instruction to students. So they are our internet provider. We purchase, we purchase our access to the internet through BOSI's. They provide our filtering, software and hardware support, computer support and repair, our emergency contact system. One of the reasons we buy this through BOSI's is besides having that specific expertise, they have folks who know how this stuff works and can assist us, but also we, by doing it that way, get the BOSI's aid, which, which helps. Management support, our, our financial software, our student management software, those kinds of things, all purchased through BOSI's. I've already mentioned special education and transportation. So I, I give you this slide just really to, to remind you and the public of the broad variety of services that, that we purchase. In all $10 million, this by budget function area, everything from Board of Education because this board, the support of this board's, for example, policy development services, the policy service that you subscribe to comes through BOSI's, finance, legal personnel, virtually every functional area of our budget touches the BOSI's budget in some way. So in all, you, you can see though, that while there's a little bit in everything, certainly those tallest bars in this graph are services for students with disabilities. That's the most expensive and the largest portion of the BOSI's budget. Again, and it's going up approximately, whoops, can't, approximately 6%, mostly driven by, it is driven by student needs, changes in related services and some, some of the cosers increase depending on student load and, and their internal budget. That's the BOSI's Budget. We're at the point now of, well, before I go on, are there any questions on the BOSI's Budget itself?
Board members? No?
You had lots of backup. I tried to call out in your, in your backup documentation where there were significant dollar changes or other changes, so I hope that was helpful. With this tonight, I just want to give a little bit of context. We're at, we're at a budget in total estimate, an expenditure budget. We're, we're not yet done putting the rest of the budget together, but we're getting close and we're at about $100,666. Our revenue picture at this point is close, $100,452. So we have a gap, a slight gap, a very slight gap, that we'll be working to close as we move forward. We're using the governor's budget for, for revenue and at this point, our estimated levy increase is 2.8%. That's the levy increase, not the rate increase. I'm gathering currently the information for what rates will look like because I know and estimate that's important. So we're close. We're not quite done yet. The governor's budget is due on April 1st. So, and in recent years, and hopefully that will help close our budget. I mean, I, I certainly for one believe that this will be a relatively richer state aid year than what the governor had proposed. For those of you who are watching what's going on in Albany, it's a fascinating year. It's just, it's never been like this in a long time. So, and the governor, for the first time in a long, first time ever, first time ever has said those fateful words, "It's better to have a good budget than an on-time budget." That's what they used to say when budgets were done in August. So we'll see. I, it's, I think everyone remains committed. Certainly the new Democratic majority, I think, has a lot to lose if infighting causes a late budget, so we'll see. But I'm hopeful, cautiously hopeful, I guess, that, that we'll have in time for our March 22nd, a completed budget with a good revenue picture so that we'll be able to, to conclude our process. As you know, that has to be the date, or the 23rd's our deadline as we move towards our May 21st vote in the high school from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Are there any questions?
Board members? John?
Just a comment today that you might have seen it. The Assembly's Budget came out and they, talking about taking time, they rejected the governor's tax cap permanent proposal.
Isn't that, I thought that was very interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, they rejected that and, but they accepted the BOSI's Superintendent piece, which was great.
They did.
Yeah, they included.
The Assembly Budget.
Yeah, right, right.
They included, it's sort of hard to say that. They, they uncapped or increased the cap, I guess, for the BOSI's District Superintendent. I think that's well overdue.
No kidding.
They rejected some of the aid consolidations that the governor had proposed, but I, but it's hard to know what that means other than they're not done negotiating yet.
Yes, so they've, you know, the governor's budget came out, so the Assembly put their line in the sand and, but it was interesting to see the tax cap. So all is not harmonious as we know, as you mentioned this year, and I think actually Friday is the, I think March, the last Friday in March, I think, is the last day they're working, but they'll probably work into the weekend type of thing. So I think it'd be interesting to see, but the Assembly and of course the Senate will see what their budget presents.
Thank you. Also tonight then, so on tonight's agenda is the, a item where you adopt the vote language for our vote and it includes a capital project. We've had numerous presentations on this, but I just, because we're doing it tonight, I just want to quickly remind the public what it's about and, and just sort of reiterate the terms of what we're asking for and what we intend to complete. So in terms of project scope, we are at the high school looking for replacement of the, of the carpet on the turf field, resurfacing of the track, roofing replacement at various areas that I'll show you in a, in just a moment. Cobble's roof replacement for the entire building and replacement of the chiller at that building and at Indian Landing, some selected roof replacement. At the high school, the turf field, as you know, was installed in 2009, so it's currently nine years old and it'll be several years as we work our way through this process. So it'll be coming to, towards the end of its life and it's gotten a great deal of use. You can see in this overhead shot that the Monroe County Sheriff was kind enough to provide us, some wear areas around the goals. We've stitched in replacements, but it's just, it, it has been a boon to the district and has gotten a tremendous amount of use. The track as well, just requires resurfacing. That's a wear item as well. At the high school, these circled areas demonstrate, are the areas that are of roofing that are due for replacement and at Indian Landing, the same kind of, of display. You see the chiller at Cobble's as well as that entire roof are scheduled for replacement. And the chiller itself, just to spend a little bit more time on that, is just at the end of its life. It was installed in 2001. They're about a 20-year lifetime unit, so it's coming to the end of its time and we've been having a, a pattern of increasing maintenance and, and ongoing problems with it. So it's just time to be able to replace it before we end up in the same spot as the high school was in. So the budget itself, construction costs of $5.6 million, construction contingency of about $393,000, incidentals associated with it, including professional fees and so forth of three point, oh, I'm sorry, $1.3 million and a $240,000 allowance for capitalized interest or DASNY fees, should we need that, brings the total to $7.55 million. The budget for that will be replaced by plan, will be paid for by planned use of fund balance and we intend to borrow for a portion of this. So we will issue bonds of approximately $4.2 million. All of that is adable at about 76.2%. So for every approved, adable portion of it, not all parts are, will be approved, but the majority should be for this kind of project and, and so we'll receive a return for those adable, approved, adable portions at 76 cents per dollar spent. And our goal with this and the bonding of this is to work towards and maintain our budget impact. So as you know, and we've talked about this with lots of different capital projects. We've talked about this idea and this concept with the additions project. This financing will roll into and be part of the financing, not part of it because it has to be separate bonds, but it'll, we'll, we'll schedule it together. We plan it together. We plan the debt service to work together so that we maintain our positive budget impact. Because of our long history of cash projects, we're positive, debt service to state aid. So we actually receive more state aid because of cash we've spent than, than we spend every year in debt service. That's a tricky thing. It's a boon, but it's also a tricky thing and it's important for us to maintain it because there's no tax cap exemption should that revenue essentially go away. So this shows the current plan for financing that stabilizes that out well into the future and we'll keep doing projects. As we do projects, we keep our eye on this and this shows it gradually taping, tapering off to zero. I think that probably for this district and for all districts over a long period of time, getting closer and closer to zero is the place to be, but for the time being, whoops, we have the capacity to manage it at the, at where we're at. So we don't want to increase it or decrease it and, and this plan helps maintain that. Terms of our timeline for that, we're, we're scheduling, we're approving the resolution and scheduling the vote tonight. The vote, of course, will be with our budget on May 21st. We plan to submit for SED approval in October and hope for approval from SED sometime in July. Bidding then would be in the fall of '20, construction in the summer of '21 and project closeout in December of '21. Are there any questions on that project? We've talked about it before. I know you've seen the scope, but just, it seemed important tonight to just review that before we voted on the resolution.
Board members, any questions? Barb?
I apologize, Mark, if, if you've already answered this question, but once this is approved and you have your timeline for all of the submissions, the chiller at Cobble's, is that not like the air conditioning here?
It is.
So could that be sped up?
Possibly could be. We're gonna be, that's a more of an Alan question than a me question. Certainly it can be sped up, but we're also gonna be redoing the roof of that building and I think you'd want to time those together.
Okay.
So, you know, there's long lead times for the chiller as well, so I think we'd want to have that as a sort of overall conversation.
Okay.
But it's not our intention though, it is not at this point, our intention to submit that early and try and get it done ahead of time.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
That concludes Superintendent Reports.
Thank you, Dr. Pud. All right. Okay, we are on item five. Change orders in your agenda. So may I have a motion in a second that the change orders as described in your agenda, all spelled out, be approved as described?
Okay.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Not opposed, thank you. All right. So, okay. Need your help. This is the, okay, all right, line it up with this. Right, got it. All right. Adopting the 2019 Capital Project Proposition. This agenda item adopts the language that will be used to request voter approval of the 2019 Capital Project that was previously presented by Mark Sansucci. This language will be included in legal notices and on the ballot. So, are we gonna read the whole thing?
No, this was what you were just referring to, so then.
Okay. So all the wording and all the language is right there in your agenda. Whoops, what happened here? Okay, hold on. So the resolution will take effect immediately upon its adoption, duly put to a vote as follows. Mrs. Bevyard?
Aye.
Mrs. Benati-Chizzi?
Aye.
Mrs. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Elich?
Aye.
And Mr. Piper?
Aye.
And Mr. Jaeger.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Jaeger.
Sorry.
You're on the next page.
Oh, dear.
What's that mean?
Try to be on the same page.
See, I'm so glad when somebody else makes a mistake. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. We needed one?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, we have to do it again. So what do we do?
Should we, no one did the motion or the second. We just took the vote.
I don't think you have to when you're tallying, do you?
If you want, we can go back.
I didn't think you had to when you tally, but I don't, I'm not an expert in it.
I don't see in the language where it was.
Because you're taking a spray. I have to Google it.
Not about that. I would say to be certain. Why not just ask for a motion in a second?
So why don't we just, can we redo this item then on the agenda? So let's just.
I won't forget Mr. Jaeger.
Okay. Because Sharon made the mistake about Mr. Jaeger. Let's go back. All right. All right. May I have a motion in a second to adopt the 2019 Capital Project Vote Proposition, all of the language and wording that is written on your agenda? And to be duly put to a vote?
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right. So Mrs. Bebbyar?
Aye.
Mrs. Benati-Chitzy?
Aye.
Mr. Elitch?
Aye.
Mrs. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Piper and Mr. Jaeger?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Aye, aye, Captain.
Let's move on to item B here. All right. Right, so we'll just, so, Notice of Annual Meeting, Budget Vote and Election. Notice of Annual Meeting, Budget Vote and Election, Penfield Central School District, towns of Penfield, Parenton, Pittsford, Brighton, Maston and Walworth, counties of Monroe and Wayne, New York. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing of the qualified voters of the Penfield Central School District, Monroe County, New York, will be held in the senior high school building in said district on Tuesday, May 7th, 2019 at 7:00 PM Eastern Daylight Time for the presentation of the budget. That the annual meeting vote and election of the qualified voters of the Penfield Central School District of the town of Penfield, Monroe County, New York, will be held at the senior high school in said district on Tuesday, May 21st, 2019 between the hours of 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM Eastern Daylight Time, at which time the polls will be opened to vote by voting by machine or ballot upon the following items. One, to elect two members of the board for three-year terms commencing July 1, 2019 and expiring on June 30, 2022 to succeed Mrs. Barbara Bebbyarz and Mr. John Piper. Number two, the adoption of the following propositions. Proposition one, shall the following resolution be adopted to wit to adopt the annual budget of the school district for the fiscal year 2019-2020 and to authorize the requisite portion thereof to be raised by taxation on the taxable property of the district? Proposition two, shall the following resolution be adopted to wit, resolve that the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District is hereby authorized to purchase four 66-passenger-type school buses, three 30-passenger-type school buses and one eight-passenger-type school bus, and to expend from the capital fund, therefore, a sum not exceeding $730,430 with $480,000 of such costs to be appropriated and expended from the 2019-2020 general fund budget, and to appropriate and expend the balance not to exceed $250,430 from the 2017 School Bus Reserve Fund established pursuant to Section 3651 of the Education Law. Proposition three, shall the following resolution be adopted to wit, resolve that the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District is hereby authorized to undertake certain capital improvements consisting of reconstruction and improvements to existing school buildings and facilities, site improvements and the acquisition of certain original furnishings, equipment and apparatus, and other incidental improvements required in connection therewith for such construction and school use, all at an estimated maximum aggregate cost of And that such costs or so much thereof as may be necessary shall be raised by the levy of a tax to be collected in annual installments, with such tax to be offset by state aid available therefore, and in anticipation of such tax, debt obligations of the school district as may be necessary not to exceed $7,550,000 shall be issued. Budget information. That a copy of the statement of the amount of money which will be required to fund the school district's budget for 2019-2020 exclusive of public monies together with propositions to be voted upon may be obtained by any resident of the district during business hours beginning April 30th, 2019 on the district's internet website, www.penfield.edu, during normal business hours at any public library or free association library within the district, or during the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, except Saturday, Sunday and holidays, at the administration building and at each of the following schoolhouses in which school is maintained. Administration Building, 2590 Atlantic Avenue, Rochester. Penfield High School, 25 School Drive, excuse me, 25 High School Drive, Penfield. Bay Trail Middle School, 1760 Scribner Road, Penfield. Cobble's Elementary School, 140 Gebhardt Road, Penfield. Harris Hill Elementary School, 2126 Penfield Road, Penfield. Indian Landing Elementary School, 702 Landing Road North, Rochester. Scribner Road Elementary School, 1750 Scribner Road, Penfield. Petitions nominating board candidates. That petitions nominating candidates for the office of member of the Board of Education were available as of February 25th, 2019, and shall be filed with the clerk of said school district at her office in the administration building not later than Monday, April 22nd, 2019, between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Each petition shall be directed to the clerk of the district and shall be signed by at least 25 voters of the district and must state the name and residence of the candidate and the residence of each signer. Absentee ballots. That applications for absentee ballots will be obtainable on or after April 5th, 2019 between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday, except holidays, from the district clerk in person or by calling 585-249-5702. Completed applications must be received by the district clerk at least seven days before the election if the ballot is to be mailed to the voter, or the day before the election if the ballot is to be delivered personally to the voter. Absentee ballots must be received by the district clerk not later than 5:00 PM Eastern Daylight Time on Tuesday, May 21st, 2019. That a list of persons to whom absentee ballots are issued will be available for inspection to qualified voters of the district in the office of the district clerk on or after May 14th, 2019 between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday, except holidays prior to the, prior to the day set for the annual election. Any qualified voter present in the polling place may object to the voting of the ballot upon appropriate grounds for making his or her challenge and the reasons therefore known to the inspector of election before the close of the polls. Qualifications to vote. That the qualified voters of the school district shall be entitled to vote at said annual vote and election. A qualified voter is one who is one, a citizen of the United States of America, two, 18 years of age or older, and three, resident within the school district for a period of 30 days next preceding the annual vote and election. The school district may require all persons offering to vote to the budget, at the budget vote and election to provide one form of proof of residency pursuant to Education Law, Section 2018-C. Such form may include a driver's license, a non-driver identification card, a utility bill, or a voter registration card. Upon offer of proof of residency, the school district may also require all persons offering to vote to provide their signature, printed name and address. Propositions to amend the budget. That pursuant to a rule, Board Policy 1650, adopted August 14th, 2007, in accordance with Section 20352 and Section 2008 of the Education Law, any referenda or propositions to amend the budget otherwise to be submitted for voting at said election must have been filed with the Penfield Central School District Board of Education at the administration building on or before March 22nd, 2019 at 5:00 PM Eastern Daylight Time, must be typed or printed in English, must be directed to the clerk of the school district and signed by at least 63 voters of the district. However, the board will not entertain any petition to place before the voters any proposition the purpose of which is not within the powers of the voters to determine, or any proposition which fails to include a specific appropriation where the expenditure of monies is required by the proposition. I need a motion, may I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the notice of annual meeting, budget vote and elections?
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Mrs. Bebbyar?
Aye.
Mrs. Benati-Chitzy?
Aye.
Mrs. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Elitch?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Mr. Jaeger?
Aye.
All those in favor and not opposed? Okay, thank you.
You want to vote twice?
I want to vote for John. John Hattie.
So it's this. So, item C, approval of the joint agreement. Monroe One BOSIS has been working toward a $22 million capital project for many months. This board has been previously updated on the progress of this project and has had another presentation this evening. This resolution on tonight's agenda is the authorization by Penfield for BOSIS to go forward with the project. In addition to Penfield, the agreement must be approved by all component districts. It authorizes BOSIS to go forward with the project and obligates the districts to their prorated share of the costs. Approval of the resolution is recommended. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the following joint agreement?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right. Textbook approval. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the above-recommended textbook, Learn by Doing, the Microsoft Specialist Series, which was presented to us on February 26th, 2019?
Some moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. No policies tonight. Yes or no?
No.
No policies tonight, but Policy Committee meets Thursday.
Right.
So next board meeting, we should have some.
Okay. Very good. MCSBA meetings. All right. Labor Relations, Barbara, Lisa, anything to share?
You want to share, or?
You go ahead. I defer to my younger-
I'm on, I'm on.
I'm on, I'm on.
Is this thing working? We, we had an actually very interesting meeting. So they presented on the bus shortage, so they had the business official and the transportation director, right, from Honeywell Fels Lima. So it was, it was really interesting and they did, and he's also part of the, there's some sort of statewide, I don't, you probably know what the name of the organization is, Mark, but like transportation thing. And there was actually a lot of information, so we want to get that probably to you guys. But he had surveyed the different districts. Everybody's having the same sort of shortage issue. But I thought they had some interesting solutions.
Right.
Some things that they were trying. So they're trying a couple full-time positions within, right, within transportation, you know, like full-year, eight-hour positions that'll be like combo positions. And then they were talking about doing some synergies between like, say, food service and busing because of-
Or janitorial staff.
Right. Or janitorial staff, so really kind of looking, thinking a little bit more outside the box. So it was, it was kind of cool. And trying to figure out how to create those positions with the different, you know, union agreements and what they could call them and, but they're doing similar, and most districts are doing the similar testing in Pennsylvania. Am I missing anything?
No.
I think, I think, I think it was interesting.
It was very interesting.
But I have slides and notes and we can, we can pass them on.
I appreciate that. If you could pass on the notes.
Right.
I know it was sent out through Monroe County School Boards.
Right.
But if you don't mind sharing that, that'd be great. I was unable to go, usually I'd go to Labor Relations.
Right.
But I was-
But Barb and I started all the stuff that sounded really good.
Good. And I know it was brought up at the monthly superintendent meeting in the sense that this is something that's not, as we know, we've talked about here when Gina was here, is, this isn't a Penfield issue or even a Monroe County issue, but a national issue. And I think, I know Mark Elitch talked at the legislative breakfast at his table and we did with ours as well, that it's the new rules and regulations where the bus drivers have to be, earn a license similar to a CDL, like those big trucks on the highway, and it's a very different-
Right.
-job description, but the, the ability and opportunity to get that license takes a lot longer and costs more, so we're all working on it. So if you could share those, those would be great and we'll keep, we'll keep-
So do you think they'll do an NISP something for that, a resolution? Because that's where it came up at the end of the meeting.
Well, that's certainly up to, if someone wants to write one.
Is there one? I, is that a hint to-
The resolutions haven't, the deadline for resolutions hasn't come yet, so I won't see them until they're, until the deadline.
Went to the deadline. I'll write one.
I'd have to look.
Because then I don't have to do that thing we did last time at the last minute, because that stressed me out.
The amendment.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I think there's a good opportunity for a resolution for that. And, and, you know, to the point that's made, this is, this is one that kind of goes outside New York State because of problems caused by the federal rules on requiring bus drivers to have CDLs, and they didn't take into account that problem with the states. Right. And, you know, there's a lot of discussion when we were in Albany, there was, we were there and superintendents were there, and I think, I think the transportation group was there as well. I'll talk on the same thing, and then when I talked to the representative, the legislators, I'd have made the point of saying, we've kind of solved this problem as far as the testing aspect of it by outsourcing it to Pennsylvania. And, you know, by saying us as New York State, school districts outsourcing our testing to Pennsylvania, kind of makes the point that the state's, there's a problem at the state level for testing.
Right.
And that, which is separate from the requirement for the CDL. But it really just kind of makes the point that, New York State can't handle it, so we go out of state.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
So, thanks, Lisa. Mark?
Yeah.
Take it away on the Albany trip.
Yeah.
And then you can combine that with our legislative meeting, which was all about the Albany trip.
Correct. Yep. So the Albany trip was last Monday and Tuesday, legislative meeting, committee meeting was Wednesday. There were 12, total 12 board members from all the member districts that went to Albany. And we, of course, as we always do, we break up and, and go to different, have meetings with different folks, either be State Education Department or the representatives. I went to see the Assembly members, Jamie Romeo, who replaced Joe Morelli, and Mark Johns and Steve Hawley, and then Senators Rich Funky and Shelley Mayer, who's the Senate Education Chair. So we went with all those folks, talked about the issues we've kind of been talking about. The big issue is, as I said, it's a different year. It's not Republicans having the Senate and the Democrats having the House, where that's where the battle is. It's Democrats having everything and it's the legislature versus the governor. And that's, that's where a lot of the differences are. The, the main topics were revenue forecast, which was, they couldn't agree on, so Steve DiNapoli has come out with that. The other topics were tied to foundation aid and the adjusting of that. And as John mentioned, the Assembly budget came out and rejected the proposal to redistribute foundation aid. The tax cap set at 2% fixed, you know, that was, seemed to have a lot of potential and it's not, you know, it's not done. The Assembly has rejected it, doesn't mean it's not going to happen. That's just, it's just negotiation right now.
Right.
But the point we tried to make on it were a couple of things. One, the purpose of tax cap is to hold districts accountable for being fiscally responsible. However, things like the amount we have to pay every year for teachers' retirement or employee retirement systems are numbers that change every year that we have absolutely no control over, so we can't be accountable to it. So we were saying, cut that out of the computation, so, so we're not having to adjust how much we can spend on education based on what the state is saying we have to pay them for retirement. And then the other thing that, that they all seem to forget about is that mandate relief. So, you know, they talk about making the tax cap permanent, but no one's talking about that mandate relief that was promised when we started with the tax cap. And we want to remind them that that was a commitment they made early on. You don't talk about making it permanent, they need to talk about making it permanent and include mandate relief as part of that. The governor had a proposal for service aid, which was to replace reimbursements with a, kind of another pool of money that you get allocated to you, which may or may not cover all your costs versus a straight reimbursement, and the Assembly has rejected that. Some of the other things that John already mentioned regarding financing, and we talked about the bus drivers and, and the, again, the superintendents. So those are the main conversations. We'll see where it ends up, but it's, every year it's a good year, we get, they, we have good conversations, we maintain that relationship and, and they do hear us and they do listen. And the thing is, they hear the same thing from us and NICIT and the superintendents. So we're all working together. We all have the same, same needs and the same design of where things should go.
Yeah. Well, I want to thank you again for going. You know, like I was, like I said the last time, you are a great representation, a great representative of, of Penfield, but you also have a really good grasp on all the issues as well. And I, I appreciate your ability to be able to come and explain it to us, because these things get complicated and they're hard to, they're hard to follow all the time and, to, to most people. I mean, we're familiar with it, but you have, I think you have a knack of just explaining it in a way that just about anybody could under- it in a way that just about anybody could understand. And I did hear John Abbott from East Veronicaoid say about the tax cap, he was asked about this on the news, and he said it's just simply not, it's not sustainable. So, you know, something's gonna have to give at some point. I don't know how far this can go and how long it can go on, but I, I find that very interesting about the Assembly vote. You know, we'll see what happens. Yeah. But thanks again for going.
Thank you.
Well, the mandate relief, when this came out, was 2011.
Yeah.
It was when it was promised.
Right, exactly. Well, we know how much we've lost.
Right.
Yeah.
And we've had the cap, and now we wanna make it permanent, but there's been no relief whatsoever.
I know. And one of his favorite lines is, well, you know, life's not fair. And, you know, this is real life. We have our students that we have an obligation to, we have the taxpayers we have the obligation to, and it's just, it's maddening. So it feels like there is just a little bit of a shift there with that Assembly vote, so that's something. So, all right. Okay, so that's it for our committee meetings. No unfinished business or new business. All right. There being no other business, may I have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting at 8:12 p.m.?
Some moved, second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.